All right, hereby open Board of Selecting meeting Monday, June 3rd, 2019 at the Rutland Public Library. It is 6:01 PM. Could we please stand immediately for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note for the record that this meeting, like all of our meetings, are being recorded on Rutland Public Access TV. Also, one quick note, I will be leaving this meeting in approximately 45 minutes for a family event. And chairmanship, we move over to Wayne. Could I get a motion to sign, Treasury Warrant 25 in peril?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass that down. We don't have any scheduled appointments tonight. I'm going to actually skip public comment just because we also have some other people that need to leave for events, so if I could move over to number seven under our agenda, to department updates. The Recreation Department is here, welcome.
Thank you.
You can stay, you can stand up.
I'll stay.
Stay, all right, please introduce yourself.
My name is Karina Frohak, I'm the Recreation Coordinator. So, we are in full swing, everything's really crazy getting ready for summer. Happy to say the pool is ready to go, crystal clear, beautiful blue water, well in advance of opening day, which is June 14th. We've been, we started as we usually do, selling pool passes at the Easter egg hunt. So, when I just did a quick little review, and we are actually, at this point, in 2018, we had taken in $8,810 in pool pass sales. This year, we're $58 ahead of that, $8,868. So, it's pretty similar, right on track. We have 250 individual members signed up to use the pool this summer. And then our summer camp kids will be using the pool on a daily basis. We have eight weeks of summer camp planned, we have 65 kids a day, five days a week, taking 4th of July week off. So, they'll be quieter down there. And that's about it. So, we just finished up a spring theater production for middle school kids, which is really awesome. Can't really take any credit for that, too much, but I helped them a little bit, so that's what we've done too. Thank you.
Anything we can do for you?
Um, I think at this point, we've been, we've had really good support from DPW fixing some little, you may have noticed that the Kubla that was about to fall on me while I was testing the pool water has been removed. So, that's not, that's not hanging off the top of the pool roof anymore. Joe's been really good about, you know, little odds and ends that I just can't physically handle myself. So, we're replacing the three doors on the stack shack that open into the pool deck because the drainage is really poor down there, so they get a lot of, like, standing water in that area, and they've rusted out on the bottom, they're not safe. So, we're replacing those three doors, Joe's, we purchased the doors, Joe's staff is hanging them. And that's about it. So, other than that, we're pretty good, good to go, ready for camp and pool opening and all that, so.
And summer camps filled up, right? Like, it filled up quickly?
Summer camp filled, we did two weeks of advanced registrations for Safe Place Kids and returning campers. And that got us to probably 50% full, and then it filled the rest of the way in three days after that. And I have 20 to 25 kids on a waiting list every single week, and just nowhere to put them, so, yeah.
What do you think is the, is it space constraints, is it staffing constraints, is it a little bit of both?
I could hire staff, like, for days. I just, staff is not the issue. It's indoor space when it rains, the Naquad, we have half of the Naquad cafeteria, so, or, we have the cafeteria side of the Naquad cafeteria area. So, more than 65 kids in there for nine hours on a rainy day is pretty challenging. So, 65 kids in there for nine hours on a rainy day is challenging, but more than that is just not doable. So, but that's about it. So, we'll be, we're actually running two weeks of camp. Naquad kind of kicks us out August 2nd to do the floors and everything over there. So, we'll be running two weeks of camp over here, kind of using the basement of the town hall like we did last year, the wood studio for, you know, little pressure valve places for kids to go if it's raining. But, they're happy to stay outside an awful lot and rent the pool and playground, so, other than that, it's pretty good. Could just have it not rain, though, we'd be, but can't guarantee that, so.
Total order.
That's about it.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thanks for the update, keep up the good work.
Thank you, it's been, I, I've just, like, relieved, because this is my fourth pool opening, and this is the first year that we opened it up, we put the chemicals in, we ran the vacuum, and little bit of, you know, attention, and cleared right up, and it's beautiful, so.
Awesome.
Great.
Hopefully, fingers crossed it continues.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to do middle school time?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving backwards, is there anyone here for public comment? Please come on up. Raise your hand first. Hi.
Good evening, good evening, I'm Janet Pierce. For those of you who may not know who I am, I'm the Executive Director with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. It's my pleasure to continue to do work with the Town of Rutland, being a member of our commission. And I just wanted to talk to the board today to reemphasize that when we do projects with the Town of Rutland and working as your consultant, we do it on an impartial basis. We gather the information on any of the studies that we do, any of the projects that we do. We seek public feedback, and then we present recommendations and part of the report. We are impartial in everything that we do, we try to communicate with the public as best we can. And it's ultimately the town's decision whether you move forward on a recommendation or how you happen to vote on it moving forward. So, I know that you had a controversial article, popular article, at your town meeting. And I just wanted to clarify, we are not a state agency, we are a standalone agency as a regional planning commission, and again, you people are part of our commission along with 39 other communities. So, it was our pleasure working with you on that project, look forward to working on additional projects in the future as well.
Likewise.
Any questions on the process or anything else?
Ron Baron was instrumental in the Steering Committee, he served us well, served you guys well, so, thank you for him.
You're welcome, my pleasure.
What can we do next? What monies are out there for us?
Anytime you'd like to get together, I know I reached out to Michael, bringing out my managers Trish and Sujatha to meet with Michael to talk about, and I know Michael's done a great job talking to a lot of the different secretariats. But anytime anyone wants to sit down and talk, we're available. We have a staff of almost 40 people, so if I'm not available, I could send someone else. But Rutland's near and dear to my heart, so I'd be more than happy to meet with you at any point, to collaborate and talk about next steps.
Great.
And then we have Dick Williams who sits on our board, so if somehow you don't get the message to me, Dick certainly will.
He's over the drive.
Yeah, I do listen to him.
Is this something where, you know, Margaret was so instrumental in pushing so many things forward using your agency? I mean, we have a planner now because it started out with grant funding from CMRPC.
Yes.
Is there value in having you come to the board's next meeting, which is a, what are we calling it? What if we're calling it sort of a workshop type meeting to try to do goals and objectives for the coming year? And I don't necessarily know, looking at our old list, that there's really anything specific to needing CMRPC's help? I'm wondering if direction, you know, what do you guys think?
Also, funding opportunities, Sheila, if you do have some goals and objectives and looking forward towards funding opportunities. Of course, there's the Community Compact with the best practices, which you're all familiar with.
Yeah, what were we, 13th, 12th?
It was my first one, and, you know, certainly to look at that closely. And we've worked with other communities that have identified some best practices, and we've actually found different types of funding opportunities for them so that they could use the best practice towards something else. For instance, like a complete streets policy falls under the best practices, but we were able to do that through Mass Drive so that it opened up an opportunity to, to look into best practices elsewhere.
Mike, I know this is next on your agenda, this housing choice, and that deadline is coming up really fast. Is there any assistance that we?
We can, we talked about that a little bit last week.
Yeah, we saw each other.
We saw each other at the Worcester event.
Yes.
And Dave and I are talking about the Community Compact stuff as well, particularly the housing inventory best practices, because that goes along with both housing choice and the rate limitation by law too. So, we'll probably be reaching out for help on that one as well.
And certainly as a housing choice community, with the, I hate to, I hate to interrupt what you may say next, but in speaking with the state on Thursday, and I know Michael received the same, the same message. Because of the growth management bylaw that was passed, there was a little bit of concern as far as whether you would still be a housing choice. But based on the number of permits that you voted to allow, it would still fit within the 5% growth so that you would be eligible for the competitive grants on the housing choice. And just keep in mind, we do offer the free, you know, assistance for the grant writing, and we have all the data and whatnot as well, if you need to tap into us, you know, we're available on that.
Yeah, I think, you know, what you first commented on, the neutrality of the agency, I think that's a little concerning because we had, throughout the process, I've noted there were certain members of the board that indicated that Ron was a state employee and he was coming in to help on behalf of the state. So, that's not the case, you were not a state agency.
No, we were helping the town with whatever they wanted to develop as far as a growth management bylaw. We are standalone, we have our own old four number, and we serve the 40 communities. We're entirely separate from the state.
So, is it concerning that Ron participated in the town meeting in the way he did as part of a presentation that advocated for the bylaw?
I've spoken to Ron at length about this, and, and I also watched the YouTube video last week. And in no way did he try to endorse the bylaw. He presented it in a neutral way, which is what we try to do. He did disclaim that at the beginning as well. And I think what's important to note, well, if I had to do it over again, I would have had Ron go before Mike Pantos, just as that neutral figure so that it wasn't for or against the growth management.
A lot of those things were out of our control and controlled by the moderator.
Exactly, yeah, the 10-minute limitation.
Yeah, the town was limited, the same time constraints as the general public in there. But just for clarification on what Sleutman Zudi said, nothing that Ron said or presented to the town on behalf of CMRPC was untrue? Correct, right, everything that was truthful?
Correct, and he, he was not advocating for or against, and we don't do that.
Yep.
It's what the town decides.
This is, I don't think, are you, I'm sorry, did you follow?
No.
Okay. I don't think this is necessarily a wheelhouse, but I just wanted to bring it up because I think Mike had mentioned it to me. The event last week was actually also promotion of a possible change coming from the state level to zoning bylaws and how we would approve them?
For housing, for housing starts, yes, that's part of the Housing Choice Initiative through the Baker-Polito administration. And they're taking it throughout the state.
Yep.
It would lower the vote threshold for zoning changes for housing from a two-thirds majority to a simple majority vote.
I just, you know, to your point about how contentious our meeting was a couple of weeks ago, thinking, that's a massive change for the communities and the state, I just.
It is for most of our communities, speaking on behalf of the whole region. I would say that the majority of the region is not in favor of losing the supermajority vote, especially in the more rural communities.
Before you leave, we do have an agenda item, talking to Sheila through the chair. We have an agenda item later in the meeting here to do, to discuss the synopsis of the CMRPC Phase 2 update. Just, you know, based upon our Managed Growth Steering Committee meeting. And there was mention of possible additional grant to be pursued in the future, not related to the last project, but for other things. Any update on that, or?
It depends on which type of grant you'd want to tap into, we have so many grants that come out through the state that are available.
So, this would be a Phase 3, it would be a new thing, not a continuation, and it would be, let's see, Dick, do you recall?
Depends on what the focus would be on Mr. Solis, as to what possible funding we could tap into.
It wasn't on up and down, it was on, yeah, okay, anyways, if it's not at the top of your head, it's to be tossed around. Okay, good. So, you don't know of any imminent grants that we may be looking to jump on board with?
It depends on what you're looking to do on the Phase 3, what your focus is. And then to be able to tap into the funding that's available for those purposes.
I'll just look through my notes real quick to see if we can stir it up again.
I mean, it could be something under the Community Compact, it could be under the Housing Choice Grants, it could be efficiency and regionalization, it could be D L T A, could be, you know, you're not an M V P community yet.
Master plan, sometimes, update the master plan too.
It had to do with the master plan, material towards an economic graphic master plan, economic.
Economic development study.
So, this would be an economic study, yeah, strategy, yeah, so.
Yes, probably Community Compact, we've done quite a few of those through the Community Compact at no expense to the towns. And the funding should become available after the beginning of the year, depending on the budget vote. But the sooner you would get that in, the better, because it's a revolving, it's a revolving fund. But certainly, you know, you could reach out to me, you could reach out to Ron, to Trish, any of us can help you with that.
Great. Thanks for coming up.
Are you all set with your questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we end up, did we end up with a decision? Did we actually invite you next Monday? Is that even something you could make?
Oh, when is it?
Monday at 6:30, I think we said?
What was it for them?
The Goals and Objectives meeting?
That was the sixth.
Oh, no, it was the sixth, oh, it's Thursday, Thursday.
What time?
It's Thursday.
It's six o'clock.
If you'd like me to be there, if you want to talk about it, get back to me, let me know. But certainly, I can make myself available if you feel it's appropriate.
I don't think you need to stick with us for the whole thing, but having you stop in and maybe guide us through some of the goals and objectives we're headed towards might be, what do you think, Mike?
Yeah, I leave it up to Mike, I don't want to step on Mike's toes.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
I'd be more than happy to, and the sooner, the earlier, the better. I do have a personal meeting that night, but I can forego that if I need to.
No, 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 we'll, happy to.
One of my volunteer positions.
Nice, all right, excellent.
Okay.
Then we'll see you Thursday.
Wonderful, if you have any questions or suggestions or anything you want me to look up before that, please reach out. And I can come armed with some information and try to answer some questions, or I can get back to you at a future date.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. Uh, Mike, you ready?
Sure.
Oh, no, public comment, is there anyone else here for public comment? Come on up, oh, you beat you, Skip.
It's all right, I could talk, that's all right, go ahead. Good evening, Glenn Coppola, 126 Main Street, Member of the Agricultural Commission. I'm bringing this up in open forum because we, as a board, have not had a meeting to be able to discuss this. This is regarding the RFP for the Glenwood Fields, and with, with regard to Article 97, Land Disposition Policy, February 19th, 1998. I don't know if the board has a copy of this?
It's something that has been presented to us in the past, we actually have Article 97 under Old Business, but if you're willing to make your statement now and we'll circle back.
We'd like to make it now, because like, the board, as a board, we have not been able to discuss this. We only received the correspondence from KP Law this afternoon. So, what I would like to do is, you know, present Article 97 with a couple of highlighted points. And what we're, what I'm concerned about, and probably the other members of the board, which we will discuss, is the proper way to deal with Article 97. Currently, the proposal, if you choose to go with that proposal and you need to dispose of Article 97, there are provisions in Article 97 to properly dispose of it. And I think we, as a board, we will, we will meet and we'll discuss that with you. But it's, it's clear in here how it has to be changed from the use of the land. I guess I'll leave that, copy that I have that's highlighted with you.
Okay, and so tonight you're speaking.
We can discuss this at some other point, but as a board, we don't, we can't really.
Okay, so tonight you're speaking for yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we all get a copy of that?
There's two, so, I'll pass that one each way. Yeah, we've had it before, but, yeah.
All right, that's all.
Okay, thank you. It's okay, I have it too, I think we've all had it in the past. Is there anybody else here for public comment?
Yeah, I am, curiosity, you skipped over appointments?
We didn't have any tonight.
I thought that the last week. Okay. I'm concerned that the board is not interested in keeping our boards full of participants on the, on the boards for the fact that, that opens, there's an open seat that I applied for eight weeks ago when I had never been recognized for it.
Through the chair, if I may, Sheila, Skip, the appointments that were skipped were like, if someone wants to come in and talk, the appointments to commissions is later on in the agenda.
I didn't see it down there either.
It's under Old Business Number 4.
Under Old Business Number 4?
Yeah, appointment list updated.
Okay, I'll wait and see.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? Okay.
Excuse me, Dick Williams, old look. I'm only, I'm only going to bring up one thing because your golden objectives are coming up. But just one of the things I want people to keep in mind, because debt is being paid off, we're going to have some money. But how many places did you swipe money from over the past several years? I'm still looking for that $11,000 that was set aside for the community center for the parking lot, and I can't find it. Where, where did it go? And is that going to be replaced? Did you take money from something else, you know, when you needed the money, you know, when you dragged it from places?
So, any money in an article like that, and that was article money voted on at town meeting, can't just be used for something else, our captain would have a fit, kind of have.
Well, I gotta find it, and I still can't find it, so.
If I may, Sheila, Dan and Joe have, know about that money and found it, and Joe is working to put a plan in place to be able to use that to extend the parking lot at the community center.
Awesome. But nice, a little communications too, thank you for doing it now, though, I appreciate that.
We'd be in a lot of trouble if we did what you just described, which was pulling money from different places that wasn't assigned to it.
Yeah, you'd be surprised.
That's what we're doing with water sewer, though, right?
Well, but we're getting approval, I think that's the point. We had approval in an article for money to be spent on a specific thing, and the town needs to agree to it. It's one thing for us to suggest it, if the town says no, well, we're not going to do it, and we can't. And once an article is approved, and I will say, there's been years past where sometimes we've phrased an article so tightly that even things that were part of the project ended up needing tweaking in the article because it didn't meet the bounds of the phrasing in the article language. But, that's much broader, there's no possible way we could take an article's money, approve for one particular project, and use it for something completely uninvolved.
And one last, the last thing I'm going to say is the tip program over here on Palma Guset. How's it coming, number one? Are you going to accept the fact that Mr. Blair owns the dam? And is there any right of ways that the town has to purchase in the very near future? Because if there are anything like that, I hope that you would get on it fairly soon.
You mean more like eminent domain for the roadside, sidewalk?
That is correct, correct. Because that, I've seen too many tips pulled off because it wasn't done, so.
So, Joe started in January, he'll actually be here in a little bit, but he needed to get through all of our water sewer issues, which we know aren't done, and get through the winter season. But yeah, I mean, he's been ramping up really fast on the tip. We also have those sidewalk projects going down Maple Avenue that he has to work out, we have to make sure we get money for. And now, it's on the agenda tonight, but RDIC is very interested in seeing the town step up and begin an internal process for the project that would be the roadway that goes past Naquad and Central Street, which, and he's looking at all of those all at once, yeah. And honestly, Dick, I mean, you know, I, well, now Mitch, he and I both live on this road. To drive by that ball field in season right now and look at what we're dealing with down there with no sidewalks and lack of parking and just, it's awful. So, yeah, I think it's certainly in everybody's best interest to make sure that tip moves forward as smoothly as we can get it, because it's coming up fast.
Especially at the end, out here.
I just want to tack on to that if I could. Like Sheila said, Joe will be here in about 20 minutes or so. But he is looking at the different options there, we are working with Secretary Theodores from Energy and Environmental Affairs regarding the culvert in the dam on Palma Guset from Old Mulan. She is aware of it, just like Secretary Beaton was well, aware of it as well. Joe and I are also looking at applying for a park grant. A park is an acronym that I can't remember all the words for now, but we can use it for recreation or different types of things. Rutland qualifies for what's called a small-town portion of the grant unless we add a certain number of parking spaces. So, we're looking at adding parking behind Marshfield so that we can alleviate some of the traffic on Palma Guset there. Joe's also looking at the article money to extend the parking lot back here in the primary building lot, and hoping to get that done by summer's end as well. So, there are different ways, we're working at reducing some of the issues on Palma Guset, but we are working strong to keep that tip on task and on time.
All right, just being on a concom long time ago, there's wetlands in the, out in the back there, so you're going to have to be careful. Out in that, that of it.
Dick, I don't know if you know this, but the tip projects are now folded into a larger website on the state side where people are allowed to make public comments, and the public comment period for this current cycle ends June 7th. And I will try, I'll send you the link, my phone just died, I can't find it. But it's interesting, as of last week, for, I don't even know how many hundreds of projects, there were 100 comments. I, I don't get the sense that it was anything much more than a kind of a beta of a new process where all of these projects are being combined in one, so park grants, tip projects, it's all within one umbrella now. But I, how could it possibly hurt to see some public comments from the Town of Rutland on that site to say how important some of these projects are to us?
Yes, by all means, yeah, get it to me because I want to keep pushing the fact that I don't want to see a dam there.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, Mike?
All right. A, you've heard a lot of, about the Housing, Housing Choice Grant Program already. We are still eligible so long as we maintain housing growth of at least 5% of the average of the past five years. We're eligible to maintain, and the Director of the Housing Choice Program, Chris Clutchman, has been talking to Dave and I throughout the entire process, before town meeting, after town meeting. And they ran into this with both us and Holden, we were the only two in the state that had this issue. And after discussing with the town officials, they found out that they're going to take each on a case-by-case basis. And because we're still well over that 5% throughout the lifetime of the Managed Growth Bylaw, we are still fine and eligible for our Housing Choice designation and the Housing Choice Grants that come along with it. A lot of these grants in different communities have gone into sidewalk installation. So, that's something that we're looking at, but we're also contacting different, well, we contacted different Housing Choice communities to see what they're using their grant money on. A lot of it goes towards using, for the communities that are in the situation we're in, where we just passed a bylaw like this, it's using the growth we've experienced in a way that helps us catch up with that growth. So, sidewalk implementation, utility upgrades, things of that nature is what that grant program tends to be used for, for communities like ours. The rain barrel distribution, just because that was set up here in the library and sponsored by the town, we had 15 rain barrels picked up this year, a little less than last year, but there were more organizations that were distributing them this year. So, overall, if you look at the town, there were more rain barrels out there, just less picked up by the DPW. So they're still being used, just in a different way. We received, received some feedback after last week's, or last board meeting regarding the town's electronic sign. After it was brought up, that that was actually issued by the Department of Defense for mutual aid assistance. So Joe and I have begun the process at looking at how much a, either a permanent or removable, like the one we currently have, sign would cost to the town. That way we can at least present that to the board to see if we were to pursue getting our own, as has been suggested, what would that cost us? But also come up with a plan and policy procedure as to if it was being used. This is the chain of contact to contact to get something up there and how to go about doing that as well. There was a request from a resident to look into the, or at least I was notified of a request from a resident to look into earmarking solar pilot money for certain specific uses. We contacted the Department of Revenue, and they have informed us that they are against earmarking pilot money. The town can put in a financial policy via the Board of Selectmen, but that's not a set and sewn, you have to do this. It's a, this is our policies, this is what we strongly strive to do, but we may not be able to do it all the time. But DOR, DOR said they wouldn't allow a earmarking of a solar pilot fund. Just as an update to the members of the board, there are some training coming up for new selectmen and for town officials. On the selectmen's side of things, the Massachusetts Municipal Association's going to be holding a selectmen's conference on June eighth in Sharon. Topics covered are municipal finance, life as a selectman as we know it. Senator Jason Lewis, who's the Chair of the Joint Committee on Education, will be giving the keynote address. Regionalization will be talked about, as well as other different topics. It's thirty-five dollars a member, and you can register online at the MMA. If you need any assistance with that, contact Laura or I, and we can register you if any of you guys would like to go this Saturday. Also, the Attorney General's Office is offering an open meeting law trainings for any town officials who would like to attend. Those meetings will take place on either Wednesday, June nineteenth, from twelve-thirty to two P.M., or you can go on, I feel like these dates are inverted on the state's website, but one of them is the nineteenth and one of them is the eighteenth, one is a Thursday and one is a Wednesday. Oh, excuse me, my apologies, July eighteenth, nine-thirty A.M. to eleven A.M. is the other one. These are free to attend and are in Boston at the AG's office. Again, if you'd like to attend, inform Laura, and I would be happy to register you for those. And then, as an update on the RFP openings that happened on Friday, the Glenwood Field and the RDIC RFPs were set to close on Friday at noon. Legally, we had to open the packets that we received. We received one packet for the Glenwood Fields from Rutland Youth Soccer, and we received no proposals for the Rutland Heights property. Where we go from there is the proposals were just open. The proposals that were received would need to be evaluated and then voted on for awarding. In the case of the Heights property, where none were received, we had a Plan B just in case. So we are looking at using a real estate broker to help market the property, as well as going through different state agencies. I contacted Deputy Secretary McGorthy from Economic Development and Housing. He suggested new avenues as well. So we have new market activities there, and I'd also suggested to the RDIC that we, while Thirty-B requires us to do an initial thirty days, I suggested that we take a longer six-month period. That way it's out there. The companies who are interested have time to write the proposals that they need to. So that is where those stand there, and those certifications are posted on the Town Administrator's Office door. We're required to post them for a week, so they are on the door there for anyone to witness. And then, just under a couple general updates, like you said, the retreat for the Board of Selectmen is posted for the Wood Studio at six P.M. on Thursday. And the last little fun thing we have is that the town of Rutland's entered into a Stanley Cup wager with Jefferson City, Missouri. But to get the community involved this time, rather than doing a big basket, we have little sheets in the Town Hall Building and in the Annex Building for anyone from the town who wants to come and write a message. It'll be sent to the other city or town, and then we're each sending each other something like that. So we'll get a little something from Jefferson, and they'll get something from Rutland that way. And that is it.
Does anybody have anything for Mike? So the RFP for the Heights continues to be open without a gap?
We have to repost.
Have to repost.
So the RDIC would have to vote to repost and vote to set an official timeline for that.
Okay. Alright, I'm moving on. Under Old Business, the appointment of the Senior Center Committee, I believe we have three letters?
Correct.
How many vacancies?
Two.
Is that the one that we have to set the quorum for?
No, this is the, this is the building study. We need to set the quorum for the council and agent.
Yeah, yeah, I gotcha.
The other members of the committee include myself, Willie Castenelli, the Building Commissioner, Joe from DPW, and Seth from the Fire Department. And Nancy, who's the Director of the Council and Agent.
This is one of those committees that you don't want it to be unmanageably large, but you hate to turn people away who aren't interested, especially when this is fact-finding at this point. So I don't know if the board wants to consider that as they, with our three, I don't know, three letters, two positions.
Well, that's one pick 'em.
The, just as a reminder, the original charge for this committee that was passed by the board back in March was to study the state of the current community center to see if it fits the needs of a senior center and explore whether or not we need to build a new one or expand the space that we have.
Well, we could do a, a non-voting, like somewhat to like the ag commission structure.
Well, how many are we at right now?
There are two open seats for these three applicants.
Carl, as he notes, is a longtime member of the Finance Committee. He'd be an excellent addition. Gail has been working over at the community center, doing, you know, as her letter notes, Frog Brigade hotline rep. And she's active with the Friends, so she's been over there, she knows what she, what the center's doing. And then, of course, June Willie, who is already on council.
Who's the other name?
June Willie, Gail Curtis, or Coette Curtis, and Carl Bindu.
The numbers at the top of the page are listed zero thirteen dash one through zero thirteen dash three.
Do any of them have background information included?
Well, yeah, I mean, all three kind of, Carl was on FinCom for a number of years. He's currently retired and worked in the financial industry for most of his career. Then, as Sheila said, Gail has been over there at the Senior Center with the Frogs, Frog Brigade. And then June's very active with the Council on the Aging, and, yeah, yeah.
Oh, he's looking at.
I'm just reading, I'm just looking up Lily's, thanks. Yeah, I mean, I, personally, I think this is one of the committees you wouldn't wanna turn anyone away.
I was just gonna say that, you really don't wanna turn anybody away.
I mean.
You can always expand the committee by one.
And how many are on the committee currently?
Mike, Joe, Willie, and Seth and Nancy, right?
And Nancy, five, yes.
So this would've made it seven, but again, this is a committee that, you're fact-finding, trying to keep your options open. Seems like this is the type of committee that more heads are better than less, but.
Well, and I kinda feel like having three resident citizens that are looking at it maybe from a different perspective than town officials is beneficial also. Like, to have it so heavily town official-sided, and then I'm kind of in favor of expanding it by one, and.
And this is not an indefinite committee. I mean, this is something that has a.
It's an ad hoc committee, correct?
Yeah, but it's gonna have an end date to it, when the, when your goal is accomplished, so.
Yeah.
It's not like a board.
That's a positive outlook, yes.
It's like a board that you're gonna have perpetuity here, so you need to make sure that your forum numbers are all set. And this is something that's, yeah, ad hoc, so let's, let's include all three. Unless anyone has any objections to any of the three names.
Alright, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to expand the Senior Center Committee numbers by one, so up to eight, I believe. And then, I guess we should do it two separate motions, probably.
Oh, no, it's okay.
No, and then accept all three of our residents of interest. June Wiley, Gail Curtis, and Carl Bindu.
Have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Is there any concern about the even number? But of course, you know, four of the members are town employees, so this is a, as an ad hoc committee, it's a little bit different.
Right. No concerns?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
DCR letter, final reading. It's pretty short.
You, I sent an email out to the board earlier today. This is a little reworded than the email that was gotten last week after discussions that I had with our accountant. We had enough money in the account to pay second and third quarter bill. So that was actually on the Treasury warrant that was signed earlier this meeting. So we have forty thousand dollars left in the account, and we know fourth quarter is going to be a lot higher than that. So this is a, a early request for an extension, saying that we'll work with DCR, but we know that this is coming, so.
Can your motion assign it?
Yes.
I have no problem.
Alright, I'll take a motion or comments about edits?
Make a motion to allow our town administrator to sign the aforementioned letter to DCR.
Second.
Any more discussion? No? Just for the record, for the people who are here, it's just a request to have an extension to the town's fourth quarter bill from the City of Worcester for the 2019 fiscal year. The expectation is that it will require a town meeting action in the fall. That date obviously is not specified, we don't have that yet. And then CC to our various interested parties, it's a very long CC list. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Alright, Wachusett Regional School Committee vacancy. So out of the five towns, one person from the towns gets to go to the executive sessions that are.
Sheila, this is the one to fill Rachel Dolan's seat.
Oh, sorry.
Which one is it?
The, Rachel Dolan resigned from the school committee, we just need authorization to advertise for it.
Oh, thank you.
Make a motion to allow the town to advertise the open position on the Wachusett Regional School District Committee.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Sorry, is this just to fulfill her term, which is?
Two years left.
Two years left, right.
You have to post it.
We have to post it, the appointment.
Yep. Thank you, sorry.
Alright, next, you have the, oh, we have to, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm already at the middle school. I'm sorry, sorry. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Alright, number four, the appointment list updated. And we also have a pretty large pile of letters that have started to filter in.
I just want to note, if I may, Sheila, when we asked for the list of, letters of interest for people who are interested, we received a letter of resignation back from Pia Nielsen from the Agricultural Commission, and that is included in those letters as well.
Okay, but it's not on the agenda as an acceptance, so we'll have to do that next time.
So that is just as an FYI, that that'll have to be added to the appointment list.
Thank you.
Are any of these going to be considered for, are you looking for reappointment on any of these vacancies this evening? When we're still in the second.
Um, well, I think if you look at the list, we have some seats that are not just expiring, they are vacant. So the board would wanna make a decision about whether any vacant seats, given any letters of interest that we've received, that they could get approved immediately, or the board could go ahead and do the full appointment list. We're close either way, we tend to do it in June, so we're within a couple of weeks, but.
Well, we have, we have some commissions here that we have an excess number of applicants, right, so that.
Not as of yet.
No. Well, did I see the con, concom?
We have a vacancy on the Conservation Commission that Mr. Clark has applied to fill.
Yep.
And that was a letter that was received from Skip a couple of weeks ago. So that is one that's there. There's a letter for someone who's currently an alternate on the Agricultural Commission, looking for a full membership in the Agricultural Commission. Those are the only two that aren't reapplications.
I don't wanna be rushed, so everyone, tonight.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, if the board makes a motion.
So they're both here, can we consider those tonight?
Making positions, I think we should do them now.
So here's our problem with ag com. We received the notice of resignation.
But it came in after the agenda was set.
It came in after the agenda was set, so technically, we haven't accepted the resignation yet. It's a little gray, you know, and I.
Can we accept the resignation and then appoint?
Technically, we should have the acceptance of the resignation on the agenda. I will say, the appointment list is on the agenda. You know, this is where you get into some gray areas when it comes to open meeting law and whether or not this is considered a reasonable anticipation forty-eight hours in advance, so.
Well, if we have time, I mean, I literally just saw these, this stack of interest letters here on arrival here. I don't wanna rush, especially if you have multiple people interested in important positions.
So speaking of rushing, I don't want anybody to rush, but I'm gonna go.
Pop smoke, alright.
Excuse me, excuse me, miss, excuse me, miss.
Well, it's up to the board what you wanna do. Do you need to deal with each one separate?
If we can, we have an individual that wrote a letter quite some time ago that we haven't addressed, so I think in all fairness, if that's the only interest we have in that.
We don't, though, that's, we don't.
No.
But the other, there's a bunch of letters here that say I'm interested in this commission.
In concom?
Yeah.
There's a letter for a reappointment from Peter Crane, a letter for reappoint, who's expiring, a letter for reappointment from Sean Moore, who's expiring, the letter from Skip for the vacancy.
Letter from Jared for, for the vacancy also.
Yeah, there's another one for appointment to the Conservation Commission.
Okay, gentleman named Jared Gentelucci, from Prospect. Gentleman named David.
That's a fairly new one, right? Is, is that a recent request?
Yeah. That was for f, uh, full appointment.
So not for the vacancy?
Correct.
So we only have one for the vacancy?
Uh, unless, I mean, they all expire this year, so unless you wanted to fill it, that's up for the boards.
Yeah, we've been sitting on it for a while, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know why we would, you, wouldn't just fill it tonight.
Any thoughts?
Well, we're gonna have three vacancies, or three slots, right?
But we have one right now.
For the end of the month? I mean, it's only gonna be for a couple of weeks. Cause when does, when does the commission expire?
So it looks like.
Two thousand twenty.
Yeah.
No, 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 the end of June?
Yeah, the two expiring expire at the end of June.
So, I mean, you're only talking three weeks.
We've had the vacancy for some, some time now. That's why Skip submitted his letter weeks ago.
Skip, when did you submit your letter?
It's dated April eighth.
Yep.
That was almost two months ago.
I'd like to do them all together, so they're all.
Well, the vacant position is one that's not expiring.
Right.
Two thousand twenty.
No, that expires end of June.
Alright.
I'd like to do them all together, so they're, they're in gate sequence, everybody starts and stops, the same.
We have two folks here that have requested, that are here tonight for that purpose, and they've requested some time ago. I don't see if there's no competition for that vacancy unless you have somebody that you in particular want it filled with, but you just approve them right now.
I read it as multiple people interested in any vacancy. I mean, were the people who sent us these letters, these new letters that I just saw an hour ago.
Those are for expiring seats.
An hour ago. But are they aware that they're putting in for an ex, a vacancy or interest in expiring seats? I don't know, but we have multiple letters. I don't wanna rush into it, and we also don't have a full board here to make such an important decision. I think the concom, and I think the planning board and other positions, uh, boards like that are. I think the Concom, and I think the Planning Board and other positions, uh, uh, boards like that are important. Important that, you know, not the Planning Board, obviously, that's elected, but, um, that should be discussed. Those positions are important, so...
I think we have some folks that are...
And then the Pia, the situation for Pia, um, as Sheila said, that hadn't been on the agenda, so we should properly, uh, accept the resignation and then place it on the agenda, because we do have one more meeting before the end of the, the cycle.
All right.
You know?
Skip, you have a comment?
Yep. The seat that's vacant, when is that? Filling the rest of that seat that's vacant on Conservation, when is that up?
That vacant seat on Concom, the one that you put in for, expires, um, twenty twenty, so that would just be over one year.
So that, that should be filled immediately. Any chair that, any, any seat that's open that's...
Yeah, I agree with that.
Needs people in, should be filled immediately. But I mean, we have, I was on the other side of that board, on the other side of that bench where you were all at, and it was always standard practice to fill any seat that they had requests for immediately. But...
I'm just...
I mean, we've always made aware that the list letter came in weeks ago, and I can understand wanting to go through the new letters that we received tonight for the expiring positions, but I think it's only fair that we don't let appointments linger. Community members wanna serve the community, and it's been two months now.
But it's not clear that these letters are looking for those expiring commissions, it's just saying, hey, here I am, I'm interested in joining the Conservation Commission. If you would've called this person and said, are you interested in this one full-time equivalent that's vacant?
Skip, what was the date of your, uh, request?
April.
April eighth, according to his letter. And I will say, Skip also has attached, with Skip's letter, which is dated April eighth, we have a letter dated April fifth from Melissa Danza, a member of the Rutland Conservation Commission, in support, a letter of recommend, recommendation for Skip for the Concom.
You?
Peter Crane, I'm Vice Chair of Concom. Uh, as you can tell from what Leah just said, this has been sort of expected to be worked on for some time now by Concom. The new letter that came in, came in after Skip had submitted his letter and Concom had submitted our letter of support to that, to this board. Uh, I will say, as a now, almost, no, a three-year member of the board, that this gentleman has been at ooh, half of the meetings in the last six months, and the other person who suggested that he would like to be, take, be a member of the board has been at, as to my knowledge, zero. Which make questions, brings to mind the question of, of how serious this person is. For anyone who wants to serve in a board to not appear at a board meeting to understand what the board does, or to talk to someone on the board, and I don't know that that, I have no knowledge of that happening either, makes me wonder what the agenda of any, of that person is.
See, what you just said scares me, because if we sit on these things too long, it looks like the board has an agenda versus rewarding folks that wanna serve the community, and I say that we move on it as quickly as we can. Skip's not getting any younger.
Ouch.
I'm razzing this kid.
Yep.
Any further comments on, we'll just take, we'll take the Concom position first. Anybody have any more comments on it? I'm open to, um, a motion.
A motion to appoint the vacancy on Concom.
Any second?
No, I'm not taking into consideration any individual applicant. I feel that if we have a bevy of letters of interest in there, I think they should all be considered.
Well, I can certainly second the motion. Any comments, any more discussion?
Um, are we also gonna act on the agricultural one?
Oh, I do one at a time, I'll do one at a time.
All right, well, let, okay, let's do the two.
All those are favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
None.
Carrie. All right, turn to Skip.
And then we'll can kee, keep Jared in our pile for the two that are expiring.
But, but expiring, but there's also letters of interest of renewing.
Right.
Yes.
In there, so, I mean...
Yeah, we treat them all as expiring and reapp, reapplying.
All right, that's a mess down the road.
Do we wanna handle the resignation this, or do we, this is gonna be on the agenda for us to...
No, it should be on the agenda.
Yeah, it's coming, it's meant to be on the agenda.
I thought we just talked about that, that we were gonna accept the, talk about the act, commission appointment.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't take the, uh, we can't accept the resignation, it has to be on our agenda.
But, but we can still appoint?
Correct.
Yeah, we can appoint pending acceptance of the resignation.
Let's point, pending, pending the acceptance of the resignation. I make a motion that we appoint the applicant, Angela Swayze, to the, uh, full time, the full voting position in the Agriculture Commission pending the, uh, acceptance of the resignation of...
Pia.
Pia.
Nielsen.
Nielsen, who, uh, requested resign.
Do I have a second?
Second. Did, did the applicant want to speak or say anything before we...
No, I'm back, I'm just, I'm very excited to be able to continue to serve on this commission. I actually have enjoyed it, you know, as a full voting member.
Thank you.
All those are favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hold on, Carrie.
And we'll make sure to have Pia's resignation...
On the next agenda.
Does, can it be on, if our goal setting is really just gonna be goal setting, we're not gonna add anything to, if we have more items such as this that we could take care of, can we do that for our goal setting, or not?
It's, it's a public meeting, so it's possible to do it.
And it's still forty-eight hours before.
So yes, yes, it can, yeah.
I wouldn't expect, given that she's moving to Arizona, I wouldn't expect there to be a lot of...
No.
Negative feedback, I mean, we've had everybody here, right, that...
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I wouldn't wanna take a, a lot on that meeting, but for things such as this...
No, it should be fine, I can add that to the agenda.
Should we put that on the agenda for Thursday?
I think if we, we take care of our business, though, it's important that, do we have cable coming to that meeting?
Yes. Yes.
All right, and that's all the business we have on the appointment list for tonight, correct? The rest of it's just accepting the, uh...
Yep.
Letters?
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to the Article ninety-seven land discussion.
Uh, this is number fourteen in your packet, it may have been tacked at the end of the old business section. Um, but we received final written, uh, response from KP Law regarding the discussion of, um, Article ninety-seven and the land on Glenwood Field. Uh, if anyone needs an extra copy, I do have extras here. It's just hard to find, but it should be the last thing in the old business section.
Fourteen dash one. Can you give us a synopsis?
Absolutely.
Chris, please.
The, uh, Agricultural Commission submitted a letter to the Board of Selectmen about a month ago, yes, if I'm correct, uh, questioning whether the town unknowingly violated Article ninety-seven with the action taken at Fall Town Meeting to authorize, uh, the town via the Chief Perkierman Officer to, uh, put the land in front of Glenwood Elementary School up for lease uh, for recreational purposes. Uh, so KP Law, through Attorney Sharon Everett, went back and reviewed both the letter, uh, that was submitted as well as items regarding Article ninety-seven and Executive Order one ninety-three, and it is their opinion that since, uh, that Article ninety-seven covers land that was purchased with the intent of use for, um, agricultural purposes or land-related purposes, uh, so they went back to the, uh, minutes of the two thousand and three special town meeting that are attached that was held on June thirtieth, two thousand and three, where it says that the motion was made to borrow money to purchase the land for educational purposes, to build a school, uh, and a discussion was had as to whether, um, athletic fields, possible future municipal buildings, and other items could be added to the land at the later date. So because those were included in the initial, uh, motion to purchase the land and the discussion around that motion, uh, they felt that, that they, it is their opinion that that land is not covered by Article ninety-seven. Uh, furthermore, with Executive Order one ninety-three, which states that land that is currently in, uh, either state agricultural owned land or land that is used for agricultural purposes that had state money added to it, should, uh, there's a policy in place that it should not have a use change. Uh, the loan that was, the grant that was given from the state for that property, there is a grant there, it's from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and that was used to build the school that's on Glenwood. Um, so there is, there could be an argument made that there was state money put into it, and it was being used as a hayfield, so therefore it would fall under Art, Executive Order one ninety-three, however, KP Law has, while they said that could come up as a potential argument, they believe that, um, it does not fall under Executive Order one ninety-three due to the fact that the, um, use of the land, again, was officially on paper for educational purposes for the school building on Glenwood Field. While a resident had been haying the field, there was no official lease or permission or permit granted by the town for the haying of that field, and that was not included in the official haying lease, uh, haying document that the town has. So as a result of that, they felt that that does not fall under Executive Order one ninety-three. So that is the, um, Cliff Notes version of this letter that we have here from Attorney Everett, um, and I did forward that off to the commission via, um, Ms. Carlson earlier, yeah, there, uh, earlier today as well, so they have a copy of it as well. Um, and Deb, I'm not sure if I forwarded you the minutes of the meeting, but I can certainly do that as well. You do have them.
From the town meeting, two thousand, two thousand and three or so? Yes, I do have those, actually. Um, do I have permission to speak?
Sure.
Okay, um, we, as a group, requested...
You have to identify yourself.
Uh, sorry, Debbie Carlson, fifty-four Emerald Road, Secretary of the Rutland Agricultural Commission. Um, in March, we actually sent a letter, a whole packet of information to the board regarding Article ninety-seven um, and possible ramifications of not following the procedures set in place for disposal of Article ninety-seven law. Obviously, we have, um, information on our side that conflicts with what the town council says. Um, we did not receive, back on the Select Board's meeting, March twenty-fifth, we were promised copies of KP Law's determination um, once you all received it, which I understand you all didn't receive their written letter until this afternoon. We, as a board, did not rece, I received it approximately five o'clock tonight, so obviously, we, as a board, have not had time to discuss, um, which we would appreciate. We do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday evening, it is posted meeting, the RFPs and Article ninety-seven will be, are on the agenda for that meeting. Um, we obviously have some serious, um, disagreements, I guess, is the word, with some of the opinions. She does very specifically state in here, it is my opinion, it is my opinion, it is my opinion. Um, and so, speaking for myself at this point, I have highlighted, um, several discrepancies in her opinion versus what we have been told. Um, and I think we deserve the opportunity as a commission to discuss this Wednesday night before anything going further tonight. And I guess, bottom line, that's my request.
Do you think you have information that, that town council did not have?
Um, based on her letter, she said that, at the time of the purchase, neither the portion or the rest of the property was used for agricultural purposes. That is actually not true, um, she did have copies, I believe, of the letters from Barbara Hobson back in two thousand and six. She sent a letter to Lou Canacchioli, who was on the Select Board at that time. Um, there was some kind of a drainage swale that was put in that was preventing the farmer at that time to access the field for agricultural purposes. So yes, going back to two, to the early two thousands, it was indeed being used for agricultural purposes prior to moving to school. So yes, I do believe we have information that was not included in this letter.
Wait a minute, just for the, just so you all know too, just so it's out there, um, the entire packet that was sent, uh, and all the letters that have rece, been received from the Agricultural Commission, and everything that was attached to them was sent over to KP, so they did have all of that when they were, just so that's, so you guys know, we sent everything.
I do, I did notice that in the email back, um, but however, she, she obviously missed that point, um, in one of the letters. Um, Article ninety-seven applies regardless of funding, okay, so it did not have to be state funded for Article ninety-seven to apply. All right, um...
That is, she was referring to...
KP Law also did an, an E-law update, oh my gosh, two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen. Um, Article ninety-seven, a lot of, there's been three cases that have been brought forth to land court about Article ninety-seven, and the most recent one was involving the city or town of Westfield, and one of the things that came up was the intent, the intent of use. It may not have been purchased specifically for the, or Article ninety-seven purposes, but if the use has shown intent, and the fact that this is prime agricultural land, the fact that the school building had to be moved to preserve prime agricultural land, the fact that the land was agricultural prior and has continued to be agricultural most certainly proves intent for that land to remain in agriculture. So there were very many things that were not addressed in this letter that I think, as a Agricultural Commission, we need time to discuss and present to the Select Board prior to any action being taken.
Just one quick, just to follow up on that, just, um, Leah, uh, I talked to Attorney Everett about the intent, and it is her opinion that intent, in terms of that article, stands for intent of the purchase, not intent of the use that was done, but I can certainly go back and ask her that as well.
Okay, I would appreciate that. And one of the things that we, very specific, you spoke earlier of the park grant, okay? If we do not follow the, the, um, procedures for disposition of lands set forth in Article ninety-seven, that park grant is one that we could stand to lose if the state finds out afterwards that we improperly dispose of Article ninety-seven land. So it would be in the town's best interest whether or not you agree that it's Article ninety-seven land to perhaps pursue, so that the state cannot come back to us at some point, because the only way is really gonna be determined, right? You have one lawyer saying one opinion, somebody else saying another opinion. I don't think anybody wants to go to land court, right? So it might be the most prudent way to ensure that the town does not lose grant funding to follow the procedures that have been put in place.
We place this on, uh, the agenda for the next meeting, give them time to do their meeting. Correspondent, Mike.
It's not gonna hurt us to wait two weeks on this, give you a chance to have your meeting and bring forth any more information that you think council doesn't have.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Do they have copies of everything that we have?
Yes, I have, I have extras up here too, for anyone who'd like a copy too.
Merci, thank you.
If we can move on to new business, um, Phase Two update?
Yeah.
Uh, so these are, these are all my agenda items that I asked, uh, most of them are spinoffs, if you will, or updates uh, from the last meeting of the Managed Growth Steering Committee, that was, well, a week ago or so. So, uh, Central Mass Regional Planning, Phase Two, they are at the conclusion of the, uh, report phase for the Phase Two for the Managed Growth, uh, project, and, uh, they asked, well, they said that they should have that at the end of June, because the grant runs out at the end of June, and they were going to submit it to us in a report, and I asked that they come and do a presentation similar to what they did for the Phase One, and there, he said, Ron Baron said he would be happy to do that. So, that's what that's about. They're finishing up their report, it's due at the end of the, end of June, I'd like him to do it in person, like he did with the PowerPoint. Sound good?
Sounds good. And you can roll right into your, uh...
Okay, um, so during the same, same meeting that we had, uh, Managed Growth Steering Committee, uh, May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, one of the members, representatives of the Conservation Commission, Representative Moore, uh, said he was speaking as a Planning Board member, asked how long the Managed Growth Steering Committee was going to continue, uh, concerns... Uh, concerns that the planning board should be the primary entity. Um, I said that I would put it, put, pose the question before the Board of Selectmen on the next agenda to ask if the Board of Selectmen should, uh, is still interested in continuing the work of the Managed Growth Steering Committee. That's your question.
Well, uh, the first question I would have is, who's going to monitor, um, the growth in the next five years to go along with the, uh, the new bylaw? Who's going to monitor it to, so we can make a decision at the end of five years whether it's going to be, um.
I would imagine it'd be the town planner or the town admin. I don't think we need a committee of residents and other folks to be doing that.
I guess that's my question.
Yeah, we have a planning board.
And it's all under the purview of the planning board.
So you interested in dissolving the Managed Growth Steering Committee when we just started?
You're on a planning board, what do you think?
Not yet.
Not yet?
We've got, well, can I, before you make, before we go on that, can we, uh, kind of dub that into the last related agenda? Uh, item, also a spinoff of that, this meeting in here? So, um, at the same meeting, uh, CMRPC said, in addition to the six recommended options that they present in Phase One and Phase Two, he's come up with some more viable options that he would like to present to the town. Uh, transferring of development rights, natural resource protection zoning, uh, tax increment financing, which was similar to what we just said to Ms. Pierce from CMRPC, that there is possibly, uh, some future grants in a new, in a new, uh, study by CMRPC about the economic, uh, impact of, of growth. So it's called tax increment financing, which is a tax stabilization process where the town designates certain districts for discounts on the land value if it were to be built out. It's a tax incentive for commercial building, the Board of Selectmen would have purview on this option. The last additional, uh, option that CMRPC present to the Steering Committee, uh, workforce housing tax stabilization, incremental tax breaks for up to three years for developmenting, uh, certain types of housing. And, uh, Mr. Barron wrote a similar plan for the town of Lester, which is currently being considered there. So that, I mean, there's additional work. Managed growth was not a, a one-all, end-all at the town meeting here. It is, it is a larger term that means an overall plan of the town, more of a strategic plan in there. What happened at the last meeting was a phased development, a number, related number to the number of permits that the town was going to, to issue. That wasn't the Managed Growth Plan, that wasn't the overall strategic plan, so I think.
Part one of the plan.
It's part one, it's part one of it. So obviously, I'm adamantly opposed to dissolving the, the committee that this board voted on over a year ago at the recommendation of our town administrator at the time. So, uh, when I said that I would put it forth before the Board of, uh, Selectmen, that was just, uh, for transparency. I am in no way interested in, uh, dissolving what, the work that we've begun, so.
Can I just, I mean, a lot of what you just said, like particularly TIF financing.
What finance?
TIF. Um, these are issues that are normally managed by the professionals working for the town, not a committee. And I get concerned when you talk about some of these complicated issues, that we have a lot of committees and subcommittees that are managing these things that are essentially the functions of government. We have a full-time planning position now and we have a town admin that's well-versed in some of these mechanisms. In my opinion, when you get down the rabbit hole of some of these things is, is really to, you know, if we want to have the planning board, it's like we're to act as kind of an advisor, but to let the folks that are doing this full-time that have experience with these issues tackle these issues. That's just my only reservation.
Thank you.
I guess part of my concern with dissolving is knowing that, how the planning board felt, that the planning board as a whole was opposed to it and now tasked with.
I think they wanted more time with it, it wasn't necessarily an opposition. And that came out of town meeting.
Right, but they still.
Form voted no.
They still did not vote in support of it, so now I, I guess I would like to have a little bit more insight or, I don't want to say control, but insight into their thinking if they didn't support something but now are being put forth to, if we give them full control of it.
The bylaw is different than TIF financing and some of these other mechanisms. And again, if you want a true impartial process, we have paid professionals that work in town hall that deal with these issues. So that is my only, I mean, that's how other communities run these programs. So, I mean, if we want to have a committee for every single issue in town, we can do that and everybody can serve, but at the same time, you're not going to get the results I think you want at the end.
Go ahead.
Every second, thirteen Beechwood Drive. I guess I'm a little concerned, not concerned, confused. When you talk about the planning board, were they opposed to the Managed Growth? Or were they opposed to the writing of it the way it was written? So that's not what I'm, you know, it's like, well, the planning board is still, doesn't want to see the Managed Growth Bylaw stuff committee or whatever go away, but what, what is it, so if there's a way we can hear from even the planning board, if you can tell us tonight what some of that was, that might help clear it up a little bit for me in terms of what was the, why did they vote no?
You'd have to ask, you'd have to ask them.
I mean, they, yeah.
We can, we can ask one member of the planning board right now, but it would, it would be nice if the planner was here so we could speak to the issue too.
Well, that's, that's not the agenda item here either, this is just an update of, uh, to, to brief the board on.
And through the, you know, the chair, the planning board is, you know, subdivisions and that's one of the things that, being on the planning board, we've got to start working on redoing our subdivisions and everything else. We don't have time to get involved with anything else between some bylaws that we've got to start writing. The noise one's got to come up very quickly here and get, get cranking on that. So we have bylaws, we have subdivisions to do and only a, a minimal amount of time. So we do need outside help to come in, but you're, you're right. I mean, the, they were upset, amount of time was given them to get this thing done, hurry up and get moving on. And that's the only thing, yeah, but.
We have some great members on the planning board too, I, I want to say, you know, I think that they took a good look at the issue. I'm just curious, I know that we have several folks that are on the Steering Committee. Has anyone that's on the Steering Committee worked with a TIF project before?
We're not, and the Steering Committee is not going to be working on the TIF project. We're just bringing forth the, uh, what you're going to see in the results in the end of Phase Two report that's coming before us, probably a month from now, that's due at the end of this month, um, that that is going to be one of the things brought before us. The Steering Committee does, is not going to be drafting a TIF, TIF project or anything like that.
So will the Steering Committee dissolve after the Phase Two update? Are we continuing that forward?
No, no. Not, not if I have any say in it.
What is the purpose of continuing?
It's an ad hoc, it's an ad hoc committee made up of a designated member from the relevant boards, uh, in there. Uh, it's an ad hoc, it's an ad hoc committee to try to address what appears to be one of the, the most number-one concern in this town. It's, uh, unfettered growth, so.
We're not here tonight to extend or dissolve it anyway, we're just here to get an update on it anyway.
That's right, I am passing it on per the request of a member of it, so that's what I've done, not looking for a motion.
And if anything.
Or for, or.
Going forward, I think the planner should be involved in any discussions about this anyway.
Correct, which dovetails into the last, uh, item that I said that I would, uh, address in there. There's certain members who are not considered representatives of the board. Those are technical experts, technical advisors, which would be your town administrator, uh, the DPW super, Central Mass Regional Planning in there. Uh, throughout the process, we also learned that there are other committees who express an interest in being more involved in there. One of them being the Finance Committee and, uh, Finance Committee as a regular board representative and the Building Inspector as a technical advisor slash, uh, expert in there. So the motion was made, uh, by Mr. Williams to send a request to the Board of Selectmen to ask that the Finance Committee and the Building Inspector uh, be included or be asked to participate in the Managed Growth Steering Committee. Uh, motion was seconded and unanimously approved. So that, I do ask before the board in here that we consider including, uh, a request to the Finance Committee and the Building Inspector to see if they would like to be part of the Managed Growth Steering Committee. And if so, to open up, uh, those two seats.
Anybody want to comment on that?
I mean, that was feedback that we had heard that FinCom and the Building Inspector should have been included in the Steering Committee from the earlier get-go. So, I mean, I think we can, currently, we're not voting to, to dissolve or continue the Managed Growth. I think we should consider adding a FinCom representative, representative, representative and the Building Inspector invitation to the committee. And then as we figure out if we're going to continue the committee or not, they're there and if not, then they're dissolved.
I think part of the problem with FinCom, I know they voted no action at the, the bylaw that came to town meeting because they felt like they weren't given materials in a timely fashion. And that speaks to the greater problem of communication. And I think when you start adding these different committees and subcommittees and ad hoc committees for every individual issue, those things are going to become more prevalent, communication issues, right? You're inviting a Building Inspector who's employed by the town to become part of a Steering Committee that we don't know what the future of that Steering Committee is. So I think there's just more of a chance of, again, dropping the ball and communicating when you have another committee comprised of different parts of different committees and town officials. Why don't, and again, a lot of these issues are issues that our town employees are dealing with on a day-to-day basis. So I'm just not sure where we're heading with this.
And they're involved, and they are involved, the town planner is also in on the, the Steering Committee, so, which is what we just discussed.
Then how come both the planning board and FinCom didn't receive information about the bylaw more than a week ahead of the town meeting?
The planning board wrote the bylaw.
They felt like they didn't have enough time to take a look at the issues, which is why they voted no.
It was their bylaw, they wrote it, um. What I'm asking the board to consider is the inclusion of, uh, Finance Committee and Building Inspector. At the FinCom meetings, which we did attend, they did discuss, specifically said that they wish they were part of this process. So both of these, uh, inclusions are in response to their request to be more involved in the Steering Committee. So respectfully ask the board for a motion to, uh, to open it up, the two seats, to the FinCom and Building Inspector, one seat.
I'll make a motion.
You can make a motion at any time.
I'll make a motion to open, uh, an invitation to a representative, representative from FinCom and the Building Inspector to the current Managed Growth Steering Committee.
Second.
Ready for a discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
What carries?
Thank you. Uh, that's all I have.
New negotiation appointment.
Uh, this comes from the school district because they are a regional school district. Under, um, six oh three, uh, Code of Massachusetts Regulations forty-one point zero zero, each individual member town has to appoint a municipal representative to serve potentially on the, as a, for lack of a better term, honorary member of the school committee who, um, takes part in all strategizing meetings for school committee negotiations with any of the three unions with, that are related to the school committee. Um, and then vote on the final proposal on behalf of the town in the meetings after the negotiation takes place. Um, the school committee itself is all who negotiates with the actual unions themselves. They just vote on the strategy and then the final product at the end. Um, the intent behind that regulation that was put in is so that if a small town is part of a larger regional school district, the, um, larger towns that tend to have more members aren't the only voice at the table at the end. So what has to happen is each town appoints someone to, again, for lack of a better term, be an elector for that town. The electors from the five member districts for the Massachusetts Regional School District are getting together on, a week from today to vote which one of those five people will be the one to sit as the member towns representative to the school committee in the terms of negotiations. So they get full voting rights in all of those, uh, school committee meetings, they get to attend all the executive session meetings, have full, um, commentary rights to that as well. Um, for the, uh, Sheila was the one who was selected from the five towns to serve this past round as the union rep, uh, a union negotiations rep, got to clarify that there, um, on those.
We don't have a union yet.
Nah, so we just need to appoint someone to go to next week's meeting. Um, now this is something that can be decided today. If we want to add it on Thursday, we can, because it is an open meeting that is televised. However, that's up to the prerogative of the board.
I think I would wait till we had a full board, I mean, particularly if the person in question is the one that's been involved. I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of waiting till Thursday, if we can add that to the agenda.
Yeah, if we have the meeting on Thursday and all five of us will be there, just.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will say that the school district has clarified, it does not need to be a member of the Board of Selectmen, it can be a member of the general public if we want, it's just traditionally a member of the Selectmen to, because they're already elected to represent the town somewhere that would, they can be trusted as a representative of the town as another place. Not that we can't trust someone else, but that's just the traditional reasoning behind it. Again, this is new to me here, being my first year here.
For the record, uh, Mr. Chair, I have a conflict of interest, my younger sister being a school teacher and involved in a union, so I would, uh, happily abstain.
Okay, but we can put that on for Thursday.
Yep.
Which means it's either going to be Wayne or Leah or Mitch.
It doesn't have to be any, any one of us.
But then it also say that, uh, that Sheila can't do a second.
No, she can.
What was that, we'll just do something in the communication here from, uh,
I'd, I'd have to look.
The superintendent, there's a letter here from the superintendent that said specifically.
I didn't see that.
That you can't do a double term there.
Oh, okay, well.
It's in these letters right here from, uh, which limits it, that's my point.
You are correct. All right.
So, I mean, that, never, that's.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, hope there's an interest. It's right here, it's number eighteen dash one.
Yep. A new member must be chosen, yeah, I see that now.
A new member must be chosen.
All right.
Sorry.
All right, so we work on that Thursday. All right, board liaisons.
If I may, Wayne?
Sure, ahead.
I would recommend doing, adding this because we're setting goals and objectives for the board anyway on Thursday. That if the board is seeking to do board liaisons, that this be something that gets brought out as part of that discussion since it talks about how the board functions with regard to the full town throughout the year. If that's okay, I don't, I mean, I'm not a member, so just making a reminder.
Sounds reasonable.
No, I think that makes sense because I think one of my feedback was just kind of, I, I'm, I'm personally kind of in favor of the boards and committees liaisons, but I think that as a board, I could have benefited from a little bit more clarification as to what our roles should be as, as liaison. So that was, and we can talk about that, I think lump in with our, kind of fits nicely with our goals and objectives also.
Sound good to me? Statement of appreciation.
You have in your packets, a, um, thank you letter to the members of the Memorial Day Committee for putting on the Memorial Day exercises here in town with the parade and the ceremonies that took place that day. It's number zero two zero. Um, just a, looking for a motion to sign and send.
Motion to sign and send with sincere gratitude to the great work that they did. Second.
Any comments before we go? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. School maintenance agreement.
Every three years, the school has to renew its, um, maintenance agreement it has with its five member districts. Uh, this is the agreement that has, says, I got to stop saying this, but for lack of a better term, uh, they pay rent to use the buildings that we own as schools every year. This is a two percent increase from the past three years. Uh, this, the school district has requested that either if no action is taken on this tonight, action be taken prior to June thirtieth, that, because this would affect their budget for the upcoming fiscal year, um.
Everything in it will.
Yeah, everything in it is the same, it's just a two percent increase.
What do you recommend, Mike?
I think it's fine, I would recommend sign and send.
Could hurt three other towns, are they all fine with it too?
Yep.
And this was built in to the.
This was built into their budget, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Legals looked at it, they probably, yeah.
Yeah, the, um, so we have three schools, so for the upcoming fiscal year, we'll get that twenty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety cents per each school as school department rent for using of our buildings.
Okay.
This is also the agreement that says any renovations made to the building that are above thirty thousand dollars fall to the town. Um, and this is. This is also the agreement that says any renovations made to the building that are above thirty thousand dollars file to the town, um, and this is. To help offset that, should that happen.
Any uh downsides, cons that you see?
It's similar to other.
We have.
Oh.
Do the chair.
Go right ahead.
I guess I'm not sure of the two percent increase.
Mm-hmm.
If we are responsible, if inflation and things go up and we're responsible for everything over thirty thousand dollars. Why is there a need for a two percent increase, I'm not sure I understand.
So I think the district is paying us a two percent increase.
Two percent more?
Two percent more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were paying them.
To lose our building.
Oh, no, 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 this is them paying us, yes.
Okay, alright, so they went up for three and a half percent on their stuff and they're only going up two on ours, okay.
That's how they roll.
Joe, did you uh?
Go ahead.
Uh, DPW Director, does that agreement include plowing and other?
No.
No, it's just.
What?
That's, that's a separate part of the agreement.
Yeah, that's a separate part of the agreement, this is just.
It's just a lease.
Just the physical.
The, just the physical part, yeah.
The buildings?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it says, number one, now therefore, for good and valuable consideration, the receipt of which is acknowledged. The parties hereby agree as follows, number one, Rutland will provide municipal services including maintenance of athletic fields and parking lot maintenance, including plowing, sanding and sweeping. For the term of this agreement.
I stand corrected.
Number two, Wachusett will pay Rutland in two equal parts, payments to be billed by November, by Rutland in November and May, the following annual sums of money said services included in paragraph one. It's a three year lease.
Mm-hmm.
So that brings, do you have further comment now that that's?
So, let me understand that, basically, they're saying, we're gonna give you two percent, but it's a non-negotiable contract, we can't go back and say, give us three and a half. What you're going up on our portion for them, you're not gonna go up, do we have any negotiation in this maintenance agreement?
I think so, yeah, it's what it's.
We always do, um, the argument that's gonna come back from the school is that they built this number into their budget and they, if we, we wanna pay more, then we're gonna increase the budget more. But we always have negotiation room, I'm just, and I didn't mean that to sound bad either, Harry, I was just trying to preemptively guess what the response is gonna be.
So we're talking two percent on twenty five thousand dollars, is that what we're talking?
Yeah, that, that twenty, round it, twenty five thousand dollars, twenty four thousand three hundred is the two, is two percent increase of what we currently got this year.
So that's about five hundred bucks and that might affect our budget, do we back and ask for more? Uh.
I.
I think the board needs to rethink this, because I mean, seriously.
Yeah.
Not to, not to just accept it and take it, so that's just my comment.
Mm-hmm. No, and like I said, I didn't mean my comments to sound negative either, I was just trying to guess, um, because I know that the, I'm sorry, Leah.
No, 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 no.
Well, that's. No, so I was sorry, I was just gonna say it's twenty four thousand three hundred seventy two dollars and ninety cents per school. And it said it will be billed in two equal payments.
Mm-hmm.
Oh no, I guess it is annual sum, but that's twenty, it says for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty four thousand three seventy two per school. So we have three schools, so seventy five ish.
So we're talking, yeah, two percent, about fifteen hundred bucks hit on the budget?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I know, um.
Is this enough to cover the maintenance costs? I don't know.
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
We don't know.
I, I haven't reviewed the document.
Yeah, we'd have to look, um, again, this is something that the school just by the end of the fiscal year, so this doesn't have to be decided.
So can we hold it for two weeks?
So we have a, we have a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, on the seventeenth.
Gonna give you plenty of time to look at.
Yeah, Mike, can we track this one up?
I just wanna make sure we can honor the nature of the agreement.
Yeah.
And it's reasonable.
Yeah, again, it's the same agreement that we currently have, but it is good to look at the language now that it's up.
Maybe there's some things in the agreement we could change that might benefit us as well.
Yeah.
Response times, you know, field maintenance and what's expected, that's maybe in our best interest to review the document.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jake, did you have a comment?
All set, thank you.
Alright.
Just a quick follow-up, have we ever renegotiated this contract in the past, asked for them to give us more?
I don't think so.
No.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, do we want to then have a motion to, to move this and then have, give our town folks time to look at what the actual costs incurred are?
Yeah, I mean, I was saying, hold it for two weeks.
Yeah.
And that way it gives Joe time to look at it and figure out.
Well, we don't need a motion.
Yeah, just move it.
We can just hold it.
Yeah.
We'll just hold it for two weeks.
Seeing if it's, see if it's prorated for our advanced growth that we have compared to the other four towns on there, right?
Yeah.
Maybe we can get a little bit more back.
And I'll be frank, we do some of the parking areas and drives aren't in the best shape.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, I mean, so you'll give Joe time to look at it, Mike, time to look at it?
Yeah.
I mean, dollars and pennies here, it all helps.
Yeah, but really look at number one, when you get the document, Joe, really look at number one where it's, that it really says that we'll provide the municipal services. Including maintenance of athletic fields and parking lots, so.
One more important aspect for you is, um, we have a facilities inspection once a year and you just came on board, so you haven't done an inspection of the schools.
Yeah.
So that involves everybody, so their head of maintenance will be there, um.
That's a good point.
So, we should talk to them about probably doing that before we make a decision too.
Mm-hmm.
Since we're all here, do you have an extra copy?
Yeah. Because I remember Gary had a, a tough time, you know, trying to get his arm wrapped around some of the things over.
They had a tough time just organizing the inspection.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I don't know when the last one was done, if we've done one in the last twelve months or nine.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
Table it for two weeks.
Thank you.
Yep, that is the full thing, Joe.
I'm sorry?
I said that is the full thing, I just checked the original.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, we're, we're sitting here talking about the contract for our town, I would assume, is the contract the same for the other four towns?
Yes.
So, all of a sudden, Mr. Sekman suggests that we do more than two percent possibly. But yet if Holden, Sterling and the others don't wanna do that, or we don't wanna plow in the town of Rutland because we can't handle it because our parking lots stink. Are we barking up the wrong tree and wasting time because all five of us could agree on things, just calm, that's all, just, there, there's, there's a lot more to this contract than I think you realize.
No, I agree, but I think giving Joe two weeks to look at it and figure out what it actually entails is.
Because we already have this contract in existence, right, it's the current one we currently work on, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the, just the only thing that changes the numbers.
Well, we have a new DPDW superintendent.
So Mr. Jordan's phone in, so is this an individually approved town con, uh, agreement, or do all five have to approve?
It's individual between town.
Individual.
Yes.
Okay.
So we have no idea if they're different, sorry, I speak out of turn, if they're different with other towns or?
No, we got them, all of, five of the town administrators got them at the same meeting and they are identical to each other.
The numbers are identical?
The percentage.
The percentage is identical, and I, I can check on the numbers and get to the numbers at all the other towns down too, for sure.
But the language is all the same in each one?
Yeah. Yep.
Move on.
Alright.
Budget update?
The uh state budget is currently in conference committee, it's passed both the House and the Senate. Uh, you have the letter from the MMA that says some highlights on the um state budget, but I also provided you with the updated cherry sheets for the town. Our um estimated receipts from the town differ between the House and the Senate, the Senate has a higher uh number. Uh, but the plus side of all that is, no matter what happens with the conference committee, our charges are staying the same. At thirty nine thousand nine hundred oh two, it seems, because that's both House and Senate. So, we'll see what happens when the conference committee's done and then whether or not the governor signs it or not, but we should have some updates there. There is a um later um. Agenda item with uh requesting that the town send letters to Representative Ferguson and Senator Goby, just reiterating our budgetary priorities that we provided them when they met with me at the beginning of the budget process. So if you see that, that is why, that is there.
Well, we can skip right to it.
Up to you, yeah.
Yeah.
Zero two five.
Those are the two in the back.
Yep. I have them in the correspondence folder, if you look at the bottom right corner.
Were you looking for permission to sign?
Yep, sign and send.
Do you, I mean, just kind of a point of order, I guess, whatever, um, do, are we normally gonna be looking for the town administrator to come to us? Uh, for permission to sign, or is that something that we can convey upon you to speak for, speak for the town?
Not. You can convey that.
Whereas you're writing to the senator and the representative, saying, hey, please advocate for us, you know, the cherry sheet's coming up and uh.
Yeah. It's some.
You know, we, we have increases in chapter seventy eight, I'd like to think that you could feel free to.
If. If there had been a previous authorization for me to be able to do that, then that could be done, however, that has not been done as of this point. To be allowed to just sign and send on my own.
Yeah, chair's not here, so maybe we should wait, but I mean, that's my position, that would.
Well, in the meantime, I don't have any problems sending these two as they are.
Yeah, and I would agree with Jeff on his, his position there too.
He's our administrator, let him administer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we wanna have a motion to sign and send?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I made, I'll make a motion to sign and send.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we wanna wait for Sheila to come back to give Mike more signing powers in general?
Yeah, we can deal with that in two weeks.
Okay.
If you wanna.
Sure.
Or in the, in the, in the uh roundtable, the, the goals and agenda.
We don't wanna bury ourselves Thursday.
No.
It'll be fun, I heard there'd be food. Keep adding those items on.
Okay.
Uh, communications policy.
Uh, this is in your. Uh, no, this doesn't have to be signed, this was already passed, uh, this was uh number zero two four dash one and two and three. Um, ju, this was requested to be um put forward before the board, just as an update to the board at the beginning of the fiscal year. Uh, just like our sexual harassment policy and our um. Conflict of interest policies uh is sent out to every member of every board and commission and every town employee that has to annually sign a receipt of the um. Policy, um, and uh my office received a request this week just to bring that here for update, um, and the request came in through the town clerk's office, so.
And I think the town clerk emailed the board prior to this meeting. Um, I, what I'd like to do with this uh agenda item is have a discussion about, um, I noticed upon being elected. That we use personal email for government correspondence and that's out of line in terms of practice with a lot of the rest of the state. And it makes the town, it gives, it puts a, a good liability on the town to fulfill its um public requests for information. Um, through the Secretary of State's office, and so I think it would maybe, if we could have a discussion tonight about uh getting some government addresses. For official use from the Board of Selectmen, it puts us uh in a better position to maintain a retention of records in line with the Secretary of State requirements. Right now, we have uh, in instance, for example, I know, I noticed a lot of us use Gmail accounts. Um, if, I don't know how you manage your email, but if, if folks have emails that every, let's say, year you clean them out, or every month you have it set so that they get cleaned out. Um, that puts us at risk if we ever have somebody that comes back and says, I need a, a record of your correspondence on X, Y, Z issue. We also have board members that are still under uh records retention laws, right now they're no longer serving, where who knows what happened to those emails if they're using their private emails. So I think it's important that we, we look to move in line with the rest of the state on that, I know that um, if I can just, Anita can't be here because I think she's on vacation, but. She did email the board prior to the meeting, her email indicated, good afternoon, I'm sorry, I cannot attend the board's meeting this evening. Uh, but it was glad to see the electronic communications policy and public records request policy in the agenda. Of particular concern uh is the use of personal email accounts for town business as records access officer, and that's a position uh that's mandated by the Secretary of State's office. Uh, I worry about a public records request that might involve private email accounts, there is nothing in the electronic communications policy that addresses use of personal email accounts. Uh, so I think that's something that um we should probably look at changing. Uh, another issue too, um, that's come up is uh if you have a uh records request, for example, from somebody on the board. They're using a personal email, that board member in order to be in state compliance, uh, may have to turn over their login and access information for their personal email. To uh either the REO for the town or legal counsel or IT staff, so I know that's something that makes people mind easy, so. Moving to a government based email system, I think would avoid any potential liability with the town, as well as uh any issues that both current and prior board members may have moving forward.
We did have uh town email addresses in the past, and I don't know why, why we stopped, why they eliminated them.
I think it was an expense issue.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it was an expense issue.
It's two hundred twenty two dollars and forty cents per address.
How much?
Two hundred do, two hundred twenty two dollars and forty cents.
And you would also have to do it for all appointed, right, positions, or are you generally talking about the?
Pertains to town employees, so I think the board would be really.
Yeah, I mean, any board and commission, yeah, any board and commission, any email is considered a public record.
What about any other on board that are receiving?
What about the Concom, Yacom?
Um, how the planning board does it, is that they have planningboard@townofrutland.org. Um, and any emails that get sent, their, their requested emails get sent to that, um, the secretary answers those, but someone could.
Isn't that how, don't we have BOS or?
We, we have selectmen at the, at townofrutland.org, however, if someone does email one of you personally.
Yeah.
Saying, hi, this is my opinion on this agenda item, or I feel this about this article on the town warrant, that is considered a public record that has to be maintained and not deleted for seven years.
How many positions do we have on this uh?
There's a lot.
Right?
Um.
Right here, right?
Well, that's just the point, it's not the elected.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have to have a paid account for every person on there?
Well, at least start.
Elected only?
It's best practice that you, we at least do for executive officials. Um, and then branch out from there as needed or as viewed important, um. And that's up to the discretion of the board, um, it is common best practice across the state to have a government email address for, again, at least administrative executive officials. It's the same reason why we have our um. Sid, town employees, if they can get them a town issued cellphone, because even text messages are considered public records that have to be maintained for seven years. Um, so if someone should, say, Joe Schmo gets elected next year to the Board of Selectmen, uh, but then three years later doesn't get reelected. He still has to maintain any emails he held as a selectman or about selectman agenda items until seven years, even though he's no longer on the board. Where we can just pull that out of the town server, which we're looking to update with CM Geeks, anyway.
What would be the town's process if, for example, you requested from a prior board member uh correspondence on an issue and it was found that it was accidentally deleted, how would that be recovered?
Uh, we, the town would legally be required to issue a subpoena to whoever the um. This email provider is to then go back into the deletion archives and.
Google or.
I'd imagine there's a cost associated with that.
Yes, the town would have to.
And it would be more than two hundred and twenty three dollars?
Probably.
Okay.
But it's two twenty a year, per?
Uh, it's two twenty for five years.
For five years?
Yeah.
Well.
Per uh address.
Per address, yeah.
So.
I'm not opposed to it, if, as long as everybody else has one too.
This was a concern that.
Planning board.
I don't know, you could be opposed to it a lot.
All the other boards.
Uh, yeah, I don't wanna, you know, I don't think anybody wants to be served a subpoena.
Um.
I get them every day. Don't want me, um.
This is an issue that Anita had put forward when I had first started to, just as the chief records officer for the town. And it's something that we're having ongoing discussions with Paul from CM Geeks about anyway. Um, we are currently looking at just our email systems in general, right now the town uses Outlook three sixty five, which allows anyone to. Go on their home computer, log into Outlook, just like you would your own personal email and you can access your town stuff that way.
That was my question, if, if we had to have a certain program or something that would require a certain computer.
It, we don't have to have a specific, um, our current system would work fine, however, we had a um. There was a recent public records request in the police department that requested any emails with specific keywords from all police officers. Uh, we didn't have with the current system that we have, we didn't have the option to just click police server, put in the keyword and get everyone there, we had to go through each individual police officer's email account and search that word.
Who was tasked with doing that?
The REO for that department. The RAO for that department, so since Chief uh Monaco is the RAO for the police department, he had to go through and pull all those out. If we were to have the system that you could just go townwide emails and search that keyword, that'd be an IT department um thing to do, but because we don't have that type of system, it fell to the resource, uh, uh records access officer.
Maybe that might be something, 'cause we also discussed at the last meeting about the uh Chromebooks. You know, instead of getting this voluminous paper, have something in digital form, maybe that would help with the justification for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, you know, more control.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in terms of the paper, um and I know this isn't the exact agenda item, but just to put it into context, um I asked Laura to go back and look just how much paper that we've ordered for um selectmen, FinCom. And there's some paper that you just have to use, all the flyers that we give out at town meeting, all the things like that, um that are from the town. Um but we have gone through just over ten thousand sheets of paper since I've started here. Um and that's equated to just under twelve hundred dollars.
Hmm.
Um so n- not that much in the grand scheme of a twenty-four million dollar budget, but when you think of, well, it's.
That's probably two, easily two, three Chromebooks.
Yeah.
That over the course of.
Yeah.
And time.
Plus, that's five months out of a year.
Right.
Yeah, that was for the entire town, or was it just for the board?
That was just for the board and FinCom together.
Great. Wow. So I mean, can we?
So how do we move forward with this?
Can we move on, on a commitment to, to moving towards government addresses for the board?
I would have.
Well, you gotta, you gotta talk about the money behind it first, 'cause.
Yeah, we can check, I can check to see if that would fit into the budget that was adopted at town meeting.
Thousand dollars.
That I believe that should fit, I just don't wanna commit or say something wrong and then have to come back. Um I do agree, this is something that the, the town should work towards and should step into.
It seems like it would save the town money in the long term, because if you're using man hours to search for items that because we're not in compliance, that does have a cost associated with it as well. And if there was an issue that we ran into where we have to.
Especially if it's the department head.
Yeah.
You make the most money on the department.
And he's the one going through emails, but it's kinda not a good use of resources.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a um, I wanna say just under a hundred emails that ended up going to that public records request. But when you think, I probably get a hundred emails a week, so going through each individual officers for that one keyword and only finding a hundred.
Hmm.
But anyway, that's on the town side, but again, this is more for a protection of the current and former elected officials.
Well, the.
And we should start somewhere.
The former ones aren't gonna keep a domain.
No, but if they.
But they've, they've been using their personal email address, they're still most likely using their personal email address. It also protects the public, because if we have to go back to Google and try to get a record from Google, I can't imagine that that would be an expedient or cost friendly process.
You get a bill for it too.
Yeah.
You're gonna get a bill.
Yeah, and the public records law, even if we issue the subpoena and have a bill for it, restricts how much we can charge whoever asked for that too, so we would have to eat the remainder, uh which is the larger remainder of the two.
Okay, so I think we should move forward, they would, you know, without delay.
I would, if we would like to move forward on this, I would recommend that the board make a motion to recommend that we move toward this, and that way I can just double check the budget, and if the money's there, we can go. Um so I would recommend that the board make a ma- uh have a motion to recommend this, provided that there's financial backing for it, for the upcoming fiscal year. Yeah.
I'd like to see a contingent on the other elected members of this town.
So we don't, we don't wanna set precedent by administrative leadership, by, by having government emails?
Also. Be. Across the board. Together, we'll do it together. We have government e- emails to the select board, and on the other elected officials, we'll do it all together.
You were in a, all in one shot? Is that what you said?
I just have to check the budget.
Why us?
Because we're the elected administrators of the town.
Ask a question.
Mm-hmm.
Are there some boards that have more, more uh more power than others, by, by, by means of example, planning can pass or deny a subdivision? Whereas some board, does it matter what board it is? Does it necessarily have to be all the boards?
Well, I think we were talking elected, elected positions.
Anybody who's creating public records for the town via an email.
Well.
Is what, what this is about, that's the town clerk's.
How would you determine that, that, that's?
Well, public records law says everyone who's appointed by the town to anything is a public record. So anything on ConCom, CIPC, uh Earthworks, anything like that, that's about something that's being talked about at a public meeting is considered a public record. It falls under that.
I mean, I think ideally, it would be everybody elected and appointed. But do we start with bore, BOS and other elected positions? I don't know how many elected officials there are in town.
We have, well, there's five on the board, there's seven library trustees, I think, three. Go on, that's twelve.
I mean, we don't need that answer right now.
Just under twenty, just under twenty total.
Looking forward.
And Anita already has her town address through her clerk's position.
Right.
And then why not these?
I just think you have to start somewhere, even if we have to phase it in.
Yeah, we can't.
Right.
We can't jump. Get everybody right out of the bag.
I just think we need to send a strong message that we're moving into the twenty-first century with email communication.
So what would your motion be?
Well, Mike, you wanna repeat that motion, I can't remember what.
Uh.
Recommend that we, I make a motion to recommend that we move in this direction so that the town admin can explore the costs related with this and consolidate it with the budget that was approved.
Well, we gotta look at the money. This could, I mean, if you got something that involves a server, a special server, and maintenance fees and all that stuff, next thing you know, we're, we're inside out. We, I mean, we, we went through uh extreme pain on the last budgetary thing leading up to uh the town meeting for five hundred dollars, you know?
So a motion is only for him to start looking into it.
Right.
I think you can't, I mean, the money is an issue, but we have to make sure we're, we're in compliance with the Secretary of State's office as well. So I think that, I mean, it's, it, it has to be a priority to make sure that our communications are protected and available to the public moving forward.
The mass Secretary of State, not the other Secretary of State, was the other issue.
The mass Secretary of State.
Okay, 'cause that's what it reminded me of.
Okay.
I mean, I know when I was at the MMA in the, over the winter, they had, there was a big thing about public information requests and everything, and they really were encouraging all towns to move to government-based, town-based emails. And it was across the board, it wasn't only for BOS, it was all boards, commissions, officials, everything. So I guess that's our end goal, and how we get there is based on funding.
It makes sense, I just don't wanna displace the rec- recreation or something like that for something, because, you know, we figure we have to do that.
Right.
Yeah, we, I mean, we, that's, well, that's, that's an, I mean, you can't, you can't fear monger with recreation, so we're not in compliance with the Secretary of State. I think that's inappropriate to say something like that. It's kinda like, you know.
Well, okay, well, or X Y Z, if, to take money that, 'cause we're down to the penny, we're down to the exact penny.
So we're not gonna govern in relation to state law?
Oh, we have, we have to do it right too.
And we have to do things the right way.
We're not, we don't, if we don't have to, then then we have a decision to make. Is it mandated?
It's, it's not mandated, but if I have a, a records request for you from seven years ago and you can't produce it, the town's gonna get a huge bill to recover that email. Or a text message, or anything.
And we do have to move forward. So I have a motion.
I'll second the motion to explore the cost and that's what it was, right, the motion?
To move in that direction so Mike can.
Just explore the cost.
Yeah, yeah.
Explore the cost and report back.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed.
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Okay, motion carries, three to one.
Thank you.
I have a question, this was specific for email, but it's also electronic, I mean, at some point, where does that line come in with text messages and?
Yeah.
So the new public records law that was passed in two thousand seventeen expanded what is considered a public record and what is not. Um and I can use an example of a public records request that the dispatch center received not too long ago. Uh requested all email, text, phone call, and all that type of.
Any social media communication?
Yeah, so anything that's, if I, uh just as an example, if I was to send someone at this table uh a text, an email, a phone call, and a Facebook message about stuff that was on the agenda tonight, that's all considered a public record, so if there was a request, I'd have to send a screenshot of the Facebook message, um a screenshot or a record of the text messages that I have, or at, at a minimum, just like the phone call, just a record that I texted you at this time, or I called you at this time for this duration, and then a copy of the email. Um bec- if it's okay with you, Wayne, because the next one is the FOIA policy that we have anyway, um.
Just roll into it.
Yeah, this, so the new public records law, we're allowed to um because we're a small town, we don't meet any of the dollar thresholds, so we can, if you're above X number of people, you have to wait two hours before you start charging the hourly rate of your official who's doing the public records request.
Right.
So if I, but because we're a small town, we don't have to wait that two hours. So if I get issued a public records request, I have a right to charge the person my hourly rate for however many hours that I'm compiling that request.
Is there a tiered limit, is, is there a max?
Up to two hundred dollars an hour.
Hmm, I mean, in, in hourly limit, like, can you charge someone for ten hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um there is no max on the number of hours.
There's gotta be reasonable.
It's gotta be, that was what the original one that was changed.
Are we paying you two hundred dollars an hour?
No, 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 no. My god. Now you're gonna have me go back and check what the law says. Um but, and these are just rent, round numbers that I'm throwing out there. I can get you the specific numbers out there, it could be a lot less than two hundred, it could be more than two hundred, but it, it's definitely not more than two hundred. Um not that I'm being paid or that you could charge someone to do that, believe me. It might be you have to, you could charge up to two hundred dollars total, it might be twenty-five dollars an hour.
And I thought there was a, a, a limit in terms of the upper end as to what you could charge for some, something like that.
So there's a limit for, there could be a limit for hourly, but there's a limit for how much you can charge per paper. So for instance, if I'm printing out a hundred pages, uh and issuing that to someone as a result of a public records request, we charge twenty-five cents per page. And that is per the public records law. Um again, in a larger community, you have to wait until you hit your first fifty pages and then you can start charging, but because we're a smaller community, we can charge on page one. Um.
A lot of, a lot of stuff's done for electronic.
Which we can't charge, we can't charge anything other than the hourly rate.
Like if we're gonna sign and send.
Yeah.
So then you get nothing but.
You get nothing but the hourly rate.
So what are you looking for?
This is just an update to you guys. Um a couple, a couple people have questions about how the um public records request policy operates in the town. We've received a slew of them lately, so we just figured it's best to just put all the information out there. Um the best way to do it is to contact one of our records access officers. Our chief records access officer is Anita, is the town clerk, that's actually part of the statute that governs what a town clerk does. Um when a records request is received by anyone else, we actually have to forward it to her, and she logs it and gives it a number, so we can actually see how many records requests we've received, if anything was charged with it, who it went to, what it was about. Um but uh Chief Monaco, Chief Knight, uh Jackie O'Brien, and um Director Moriarty are all resource access officers as well. Um so if dispatch, fire, police um get any public records request, any of them can answer it as well. Um and again, it's just up to the individual employee to track, I did this, I did that. Um.
So who would be charged with, for example, if you got a public records request from any of the board members, including the select board? You know, let's say it was through a, a text or something like that, it wouldn't be self-reporting, right? You'd have to have a third party go into someone's phone and pull those records out, or could I self-report?
You, it's, the first step is self-report. Um for any employee is, these are all the emails I have, these are, this is a screenshot of all the texts that I had about this conversation. If the requester feels that there is insufficient information that was provided, they would have to go to the chief rec- records access officer as a third party too.
And then they would have access to?
Yeah, we, they're, they would legally be required to have them have access to them.
So this law has been expanded a lot.
A lot.
Quite a bit.
Uh very, yes.
It's a lot of forms of communication now.
I used to do it years ago, and it was no India detailed like it is now.
Yeah.
All right, you have anything further on the?
No, there's just.
Freedom of information?
An update, most of our requests actually don't come under the FOIA law on the federal level, they come under the Massachusetts Public Records Law, which is actually more stringent, stringent
More stringent.
than the uh federal one, so.
All right, um DPW thank you letter.
We received a very nice letter, if I can find it, I think I might have kept it.
Uh-oh.
Um. From some residents, right here. Walter and Stacy Lacy, who would like to publicly thank the Department of Public Works for all the work that they do in town. The letter reads, to whom it may concern, the Town of Rutland Department of Public Works, DPW, did an awesome job this past winter, not just throughout the town, but specifically Cleveland Circle and Arrowhead Way, which was recently turned over from a private company. The road was as, was wide, always passable, sanded, salted before, after, and during each storm. Compared to previous years, this was the best the roads have ever been maintained. Thank you very much to Rutland DPW Road crews, Walter and Stacy Lacy. So congratulations, Joe, and here's your copy.
It's not me, it's the great staff.
Good, yeah, make sure you forward that to all your staff too.
Yeah.
We're collecting these uh, there was a signature on the.
Oh, no, that was, that's what the employees have to turn in at the beginning of each fiscal year, saying that they received that.
Oh.
That's part of the policy.
Gotcha. Fine.
All right, we have any other business for the board tonight?
Oh, uh Dick, sorry.
Oh. Um with the, I remember approval of the treasury warrant, but were the minutes ever approved? I don't remember any.
There were no minutes this week.
We don't have any minutes.
No minutes?
They weren't turned in.
They weren't.
They're, they're still being worked on by that, I mean, they, it's not that they were forgotten, it's just they hadn't been.
She's viewing it off of the internet and doing it long-term.
Um just one thing if I could, Wayne.
Go ahead.
Um just for the members of the public who look at the website and notice that the selectmen's agenda has a little bit of a format, ignore all the scribbles, I'm gonna pull this one up now, uh has a little bit of a format change to it. Uh and the biggest question we have is why are the numbers not continuous with each other? If you notice under old business, we go thirteen, seven, eight, four, fourteen. Uh reason being is we've started a new numbering system where if something is number fourteen on the agenda, it's the fourteenth thing that the board has worked on since the reorganization happened. So we actually have a catalog now in the selectmen's office to be able to go back and say, since the reorganization, this was talked about on this date, brought back up on this date, and this is the action that was taken. So it allows us to go back and double check the records. That's also why everything that's in the packet that you guys had, had a key code on the top of it. So if something is listed as fourteen dash one, that's item number fourteen on the agenda, page one, page two, page three, and so on from there. So we can go back and actually check the records of, this is the backup information to what was talked about at that meeting. Um the packets are then all scanned, and we have them stored electronically in the order that they're brought up to, so if anyone does have any questions about why was this talked about last night, you can say this is all the backup information, and you can keycard it to what was talked about then.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.